Things, um, the past Saturday.
I'm sorry, sorry to raise your hand.
I think it's on the agenda.
Oh yeah, I think it's about awareness if you're doing this town.
You can't talk right now, that's not on the agenda. You have to wait for the agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Who did you ask? Who did you ask? I don't know this stuff.
I, I will answer your question. If it pertains to any item that's listed on the agenda, okay? Thank you. And again, okay. Number six, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Um, last Saturday we had the Coalition for Safe Community Event. It was called Community Heroes. And it was very successful. I'd like to thank Marcelle Elwin for putting that on and working so hard to get it together. Sergeant Elwin did a great job. Um, could've been maybe more well attended, but for the first time out, it was really, really good. I have a lake report. Um, total bands sold for the lake, past two weekends it's been open. One thousand eight hundred sixty-two with a total of nine thousand three hundred sixty-three dollars. Twenty-nine picnic tables, four hundred twenty dollars, and five boat rides for seventy-five dollars. The total sales to date are ten thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars. I would also like to mention that one of our students, Juliana Snyder, was recognized at the Cedar Creek Awards last night for being the student with the highest break point average from Eck Harbor City. So that was a nice event, very well attended. So congratulations to Ms. Snyder. And that's actually all I have. Oh wait, I do have one more thing, I'm sorry. Another coalition, Pastor Bruce from the Moravian Church is in our Coalition for the Safe Community. He's looking for community service projects to do on between July tenth and July fourteenth. Volunteers are coming from the Moravian Missions Team in New York. And they would like to help out residents in Eck Harbor City with maybe minor repairs, painting, and lawn care on their homes. So if anyone's in need of any of these services, free of charge, you can call Pastor Bruce. And the number's nine six five one nine two zero. And the information is also on the website. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Pat?
Joseph.
Bob?
Just, uh, nothing. Uh, in code enforcement, Steve stepped down. Here's your only good service. He, because of his health and his wife's health, he couldn't, um, he couldn't commit to the three days a week. So I asked Meg to reach out to police departments and first before we advertise and see if there's any retired police officers that would be interested in that, that position. It seems to me, I've heard that there might be a pool picked up from retired policemen that want to work part-time and wouldn't need to have it or anything. So I just made to do that. If we don't get any reply there, we're gonna have to advertise for a new part-time position.
Okay, thank you. Carol?
I have nothing.
Hazel?
I have nothing.
Angela?
Uh, yeah, I want to, I want to thank everybody for coming out to the Memorial Day thing. I apologize for wasn't always cracked up to do it my first time and I hope to do better next year.
You did a good job, Angela.
I think it was, I think we did a good job, Angela. I think it, I'm very, uh, it was nice that you were able to get a picture and did a nice shot.
Kind of learned something there where I got ahead of my fear certainly and learned that too.
Cliff? Mason?
Nope.
Steph?
The only thing I have is, uh, if you come in, you've noticed there's a black drap on City Hall. It was put up for two people. One was George Emerald, who was our prosecutor, public defender for a while. And then the other one passed away, uh, this past Monday, I believe it was. Darian Cole worked here and, uh, for many years as a dispatcher and retired here before it was closed. And she passed away. So I just want to mention that.
Pardon me? Darian Cole. Okay. I have entertain motion to accept the reports is given.
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pouse or we have a police department report, Lieutenant?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to be very quick. The mayor mentioned Sergeant Elwin did a great job with the, uh, community efforts. Put in a lot of work for it. Uh, there is an, uh, event this weekend, the bicycle race coming through on Beer Street on the eleven.
Beer Street Beach, right?
Correct.
I was just gonna ask how.
It's gonna be from.
I got it written right here. I was just gonna check on that.
Bikes should be arriving around eight AM, eight AM to around two PM. Uh, so avoid Beer Street if you can, it's gonna be busy. Other than that, I'm not sure if you're aware, we didn't have a shooting in the village several weeks ago that you may, uh, have heard of. Just want to let you know through investigated by Sergeant Ellen and Sergeant Elwin and the prosecutor's office, we were able to arrest all three people, Bob. And they were charged, just to let you know. So again, uh, we're out there working hard to investigate these crimes. So we just want to bring that to your attention. Yep.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Lieutenant, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Jody? Meg? Chair?
Yes, we have two ordinances that we would like to introduce. Uh, the first one, we had gotten a response from Community Champions. Community Champions administers the vacant, uh, property registration ordinance for us. They do it throughout the county. And we had proposed increases. Um, their legal department strongly advised. They said it's fine to go to every six months, which effectively we doubled the fee from five hundred for one year, it's five hundred every six months. Part of the reason is that these mortgages are constantly assigned and reassigned in different companies. Uh, and the whole idea of the program isn't so much to raise revenue as it is to get the vacant properties, also referred to as zombie properties, um, sold off, foreclosed, sold off, and put back on the, uh, you know, as active dwelling units, get families in there as soon as possible. So, uh, we had raised the fees. However, they recommended that we limit it to no more than five hundred dollars every six months. They felt that to raise it anymore would subject us to legal challenge and they advised against it. So based on their experience and their advice and their administrators, I have an amendment. We, uh, basically, um, setting the fees at five hundred dollars for every six months.
Okay, is there any questions or comments?
So we can introduce that?
Is there a motion to introduce the amendment?
I'll second it.
Motion made in second. Uh, any questions? Or have a roll call for introduction? No, yeah. No, no. All those in favor? Aye. Pouse or most to advertise on June twenty-second or June fourteen for a public hearing on the twenty-second?
Make a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair?
The second ordinance is an amendment to the water fees. Obviously, there was a rather heated discussion, uh, at the last meeting about the increase in the water fees. Um, there's a lot of contributing factors, but one of the contributing factors is the fact that a lot of these vacant properties are getting the water service turned off. Um, again, being a zombie property. And what a zombie property typically is where a bank, uh, begins foreclosure. The people move out, but the bank doesn't complete the foreclosure. Or they get a judgment and then they don't take possession of the property. The way foreclosure works, if you don't pay your mortgage, the bank has the right to sue and get a foreclosure judgment. And then the next step would be basically they kick you out. But what the bank has done with a lot of properties is they've begun foreclosure. Because there was little of any or no equity in the property, um, the people walk away. And the bank then doesn't assume control of the property fully, even though they have the judgment. And the water service gets disconnected. And there's a burden on the city in terms of police presence, having to go to these vacant properties, uh, vandalism, et cetera. So, uh, what has been proposed is that there's a minimum water fee that everybody pays. And that even if your service gets discontinued, you will still be billed the property, not you, but the property will still be billed for the minimum service fee. Uh, we legally can do it. It's a, it's a way to at least set off some of the lost revenue because the city is losing significant revenue where these properties are sitting there vacant now. There is a significant burden on the city resources, having to attend to these vacant properties. Um, so this amendment would basically say that once you get service to a property, you can build the minimum fee. And even if for whatever reason you don't pay and your service is discontinued, you still have to pay the minimum fee. Uh, and that, that's an amendment that, uh, have been discussed.
Your motion to introduce?
I'll make a motion.
All the questions out? Motion made in second. Have questions on the motion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Does that affect only that particular property or affects everyone?
Well, it, it won't increase anybody's bills.
That's why I want to make sure.
Yes.
It only affects the situation that it appears.
Well, no.
Any property.
We had, can I answer that about an instance we had this year? We had an instance this year where we had a person bought a property and it was an apartment. And he came in and says, I want my apartment turned off because I don't have anything. Under this ordinance now, if he has an apartment, he has service, he's still gonna have to pay the sixty dollars.
Yeah, sure. Only affect that property, doesn't affect.
No.
Everybody else.
No, just the property.
Yeah. Of anything, it more fairly makes everybody have to pay.
Okay.
So that those that are paying aren't a burden with those that aren't paying.
That's what they can, or not pay.
Okay, sit. Does anybody else have a question?
I have a comment. I did talk to Bridgette about this today. And just to add a little bit to it, um, apparently they pull their meter now, they do not have, they, they do not pay anything. Now this ordinance allows who, if the meter is pulled by the owner, they still have to pay the flat rate. They have to pay those flat rates. So as it stands now, you, the city would pretty much have to dig up their service in order for them to not have to pay the flat rate. So just give us more protection.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. All, motion to introduce has been made. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion to advertise June fourteenth for a public hearing on June twenty-second?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Chair, any else?
Uh, just next Thursday to be meeting of the Economic Development Committee. Uh, it'll be at Hill Five and Ten on Philadelphia Avenue. I will not be there at the Penn Brothers, my office will be there. If there's any businesses that want to attend, again, next Thursday, uh, it's Tommy Adi is the, what's the say now? Public Market Building at five o'clock next Thursday. And any business, businesses that do business and donate, want to attend, more than happy to have you there.
Five o'clock?
Five, nine o'clock.
Thank you. Uh, Ryan?
Sure. Uh, just a quick update on the two somewhat active projects. Verizon did, they completed the utility relocation at Washington and Camp. They got all their facilities off the pole and then they left the pole there. So it was just a pole standing with nothing on it. So we can't start until they're moved in. So.
I spoke with Ryan Lutner this morning.
Yeah, okay, good.
He said he would personally call the scheduling people and get them out here.
I reached out to the construction group the other day, basically, to try to get them to come out. But once they relocate the, once they actually just take the pole out, um, we'll be given our recognition receipt. Hopefully they'll be with you fairly quickly. Uh, District Street is the other project that would have been paid today if not for a reading error that contracted me. So they are correcting that. We're expecting that to be paid in the next few days. I don't have an exact date yet.
Tomorrow morning they're paid. Everything's in good place.
There you go. Um, so yeah, Bob, I was, we talked to Bob earlier today. I'm trying to handle it.
Yeah.
And then the last thing is, uh, late last year, we applied for MISBLAID funding for Chicago Avenue. Uh, we asked for two hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. And we received notice that the city has received two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars of that requested amount. Um, so I submitted a direct proposal to Jody for the other day, uh, and I gave to Mr. Dennis earlier. Uh, we'd like to get authorized on the survey portion as quickly as possible. We're gonna try to get it built this fall. Um, the survey portion of the proposal is six thousand eight hundred dollars. See, it's a survey based plan.
Motion to allow them, uh, begin the survey.
I'll make it.
For a second?
Is it better? I said.
Wait, okay, sure. For a second?
Second.
All right, questions on the motion?
Is there, is, are, is getting this done now, is we're gonna use that money, the funding, and not have to go over?
Well, yeah, you're, you're gonna use that for construction. You're allowed to use that for construction and inspection services, which are to perform by us. You guys have to fund, um, survey and design and contract administration. So at, at this point, we're just trying to get the survey funded to stay on course. Um, our proposal includes full services, but obviously we wanted to speak.
No, I mean with the, with the grant, because you said it was less.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, so what we applied for included, I won't say it's fifty feet in this direction, the intersection of, uh, yeah, Claudius and Chicago. Um, so what we can do is just pare down the limits a bit so that we get to where our funding amount is.
Okay.
You know, and you will have to cover the difference due to, we'll just scale our project to meet our.
Six hundred block. This is the six hundred block of Chicago Avenue. Do you have any other questions? All right. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed to the order? Any else want?
Uh, no, no, I was, there's a question.
Number twelve. Resolution renew the following winter licenses from July first through June thirtieth of two thousand eighteen. Whitehurst Pike Strike Zone, Louie's, uh, LLC, and one O five LLC Leatherheads. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Pouse or order? Number thirteen, cancellation of grants amounts. Jody?
Uh, just in house, we're gonna just close that, um, off, three times, a whole hazardous, hazardous, sorry. Slight remediation grant. So, um, we're gonna try to just do, um, hand our audit, that was just one of their suggestions, was getting rid of it. I kind of held off because, to be honest, it's not really positive financially. So we're just gonna do a little bit each year. So it's doing that and then just opening up some like rounding differences for a couple of grants.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Aye. Pouse or order? Number fourteen, introduce ordinance number ten to seventeen, recommending chapter one twenty, construction code, uniformed, City of Eck Harbor City Code for Electrical Grant Permit. This is, was recommended by the order when they reviewed the, uh, the building department for fees. They recommended that these increases be, uh, adopted for the upcoming year. So, uh, is there a motion to introduce the, uh, electrical fee update?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion to advertise on June fourteenth for a public hearing on the twenty-second in the Hamilton Gazette.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Aye. Pouse or order? Number fifteen, the bill lists. Is there a motion to pay the bills that circulate?
So moved.
Make it.
Motion made in second. Have a roll call.
Mr. Dennis?
Yes, with the exception of Remington Burniken Associates and the Court for Reason stated in January.
Mrs. Kinsley?
Yes.
Mrs. Keener?
Yes, with the exception of the Eck Harbor City Municipal Court for Reason stated in January.
Mr. Lalo?
I, I got a quick question or something. I'm also gonna do this, maybe you could, what was the flowers?
Uh, that was the flowers to the planters on Philadelphia Avenue.
Did that come from Grant Honey?
No, that was the flowers for the Eck Harbor City Lake. It was under Parks and Playground. Uh, we buy them every year.
That was for the lake?
It should say Parks and.
It does say Parks and Playground.
I'm sorry, I think that was plant.
Well, Parks and Playground is not a lake fund by.
It's the same thing.
Yeah, it's all the same thing.
It's all the same fund.
You got them separate. Don't you, aren't you in charge of the lake? That's why I'm there.
It's Parks and Playground.
Because if it's all together, if it's all together, if you think about it, when you look at the budget, it's a pretty big budget. That's why I'm there.
Forty-five thousand dollars. Are you talking about the Parks and Playgrounds budget?
No, well, if, if they're both together. So how come the lake funding didn't pay for that?
There is no, it's Parks and Playground.
The lake is under Parks and Playgrounds. It's part of the committee.
The lake brought in like seventy thousand last year, right? Actually seventy-four thousand dollars.
Well, that's, so seventy-four thousand last year we brought in, right? So that's why.
That revenue goes into the general fund, doesn't go into a lake account. It goes to the city. The, the appropriations come from Parks and Playground. And that is forty-five thousand dollars a year. It hasn't changed in a very long time. Ten, eleven years.
Because, because of the fact that it's separate. Because the lake falls on you, that's why.
They're not separate. It's all.
It's always been under the Parks and Playground.
Okay.
It's just that I usually am in charge of directing the operations of the lake. I am in charge of directing operations of the lake. Mason could do it anytime. Why not the Parks and Playgrounds?
Question?
Yes. The Parks and Playground, okay?
Yeah.
Been, since it's been a city, controls the lake.
Yeah.
Okay?
Right.
That committee, Parks and Playground.
Right.
So I want everybody to be clear on that. Parks and Playground, introduce what council will do. Okay, so Mason, you are, you are the chairperson, correct?
So Parks and Playground?
Yes. Well, that's where it should be. Everything at the lake should go to you.
Me and Lisa do talk about it.
Yeah, but it's you, through you and the committee.
All right, true.
It's where it should be, the committee.
Yep.
You have three, four people in the committee. It's always been like that.
Well, first of all, I don't see what the, the issue here is.
It's the issue. Let, let, let me, no, let me finish.
Go ahead.
Because you make statements and we have to sit here all night and listen to that. The point of the issue is, we have committees. As simple as that. Mason is the chairperson. That committee recommends it for council. So let, just be real.
May I say something?
Go ahead.
The, um, when we, a long time ago, when we had a city administrator, the city administrator used to run day-to-day oper- operations at the lake. And there is a disclaimer in the policy and procedure manual, that the employee policy and procedure manual, that some of the administrative things in City Hall have been divvied out to basically Meg, Jody, and myself, and to council. We've taken on a lot more responsibility. So the administrative day-to-day operations have been basically supervised by a supervisor at the lake under my direction. Now, that's the way council decided to do it. It's in the policy and procedure manual. And it's just the way it has been for at least the past ten years or forty years in our life.
And Mason has seemed to have had a problem with the mayor running here, taking care of it. That's between him and the mayor.
But I do understand what they're, we should have more meetings together.
Hey.
Yeah, all I'm saying.
I do agree with that.
Well, Mason, you can call committee meetings at any time you want. Does anybody permit you from doing that?
Nope.
Do I ever permit you from doing that?
Not a long day. Just the kids.
Do I share?
The kids, they're the only ones that prefer me from doing it.
I'd like to make a comment. Um, the mayor has done an unbelievable job out there for the whole time that, when she was on council and did Parks and Playgrounds. And all of her assistants now. The lake has never run better. We've never made as much profit until the mayor was on city council. She improved from personnel to the cleanliness, to the, working with the campground people. Lisa should really be commended. Most people don't realize that, but all of that that's happened out there is because of her. And we sit up here and it is true, Lisa's in charge of it, but I think something that's not broken is my opinion only.
It's making money.
It is. It's paying for itself.
And I also have one more thing, I'm sorry. But when I first took over the Parks and Playgrounds, the budget was sixty-five thousand dollars for appropriations. It is, I, that's the very first thing I did, was do a zero-based budget for Parks and Playgrounds and cut the taxpayers' portion, twenty thousand dollars I saved the taxpayers by doing the budget that way. So it's been forty-five thousand dollars for the past ten years. And it hasn't increased. So I don't, I don't know what to get.
Okay. Angela, any other questions? Okay.
Mr. Lalo?
Yes.
For the bill list?
Yes.
Mr. Me?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mrs. Mueller?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mayor?
No, I'd just like to thank Angelo for the great job he did do on Memorial Day. I thought it was very nice. It's a shame the weather didn't cooperate, but it kind of did. It was a little cold. But I think he did a great job. His cemetery was just awesome. Appreciate it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
No.
Carol?
I just have one statement that I'd like to make. I missed one meeting since I have been elected to this position because I have a home in Florida that I no longer can go to because I rented out to pay my taxes. So I had to go down and close that home. So I missed one meeting. I understand there's a lot of people upset about the fact that I missed that meeting. And I would like to personally apologize to Lisa because had I been here, I would have voted yes. That's all.
Hazel?
I would just like to make a comment. I would just like to make a comment about the event that was Saturday. Um, originally Angelo and I were appointed to that, uh, committee with Sergeant Alwyn to work on that event that was Saturday. And we were never called to any meetings or asked to take part or anything. So that's why I wasn't there because we were left out of the planning. And we were appointed by the Coalition to be on that committee.
Angelo?
A lot of people have been asking me about when the reassessments are coming out.
Pardon me?
When the reassessments are coming out.
From my understanding, the bill, well, they're not completed yet. They're still in the process. Uh, it should be sometime the end of August, but we'll give it clarification. In fact, I'll ask them to come to the next meeting. And it can be put on, it'll be put on the agenda. I'd rather he speak about that than I. And we'll have to put on the agenda.
I think, I think at the, um, when we had the tax appeal that we said by November.
Yeah, but it should be done.
I think it's about to reverse. We have the Moravian Church file to reverse.
But I think they notify them and then they have the right to come in if people want to correct the assessments. And that will be beginning of November.
Yeah. But I'll have to go at the next meeting to give a full report. Any other questions?
Um, hey, Bob, did you hear anything, I don't know if it has come up about the pregnancy crisis, about permit over there?
No, I haven't heard of it.
Because they were trying to get a permit and the permit was like almost half of what the actual bill was gonna be to, to do the job.
Is that from code enforcement or from the building department?
I think it's the building department.
Yeah.
Construction official.
Construction.
Yeah, and it's, it's a nonprofit. So they, I, I think they were just looking to get a, you know, to see if they could, they had submitted a letter. Apparently they submitted a letter about.
They didn't. They would, it would go to me. There was no letter.
There was no letter?
No.
I'll find out. Because I was told that the letter was submitted.
No, it hasn't been, because Donna gives them to me when they're submitted. What is it they're planning?
They're trying to get an alarm system put in there. And, uh.
They're trying to.
Yeah, because it was like, it was like almost five hundred dollars for the permit. And the whole thing is gonna be like twelve hundred dollars.
I, I'm not sure what that, what that's all about.
Well, I'll find out about the letter.
I'll find out what that, the permitting was about. I don't know if, if there was additional electrical required to, from the building department to put that in. So I don't really know.
Okay, I don't either.
First I've heard, so I'll find out.
It was just, I, I, somebody had asked me about it last week. And when they told me that, I said I would get to you and ask about it.
I'll, I'll, I'll find out tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else, Angelo?
No, that's it.
Cliff? Mason?
Uh, just a couple things. Um, just want to let Noah, baseball is almost officially over.
Summer hasn't been done yet.
It was a long season. My boys, um, then we went oh and fourteen, still made the playoffs. And then knocked off the number two seed. So, and then we ended up losing, uh, the other night to, um, one of the other teams. So we didn't make it to the championship. But that would've been hilarious to see your trophy saying oh and fourteen. But, um, uh, also I just want to let you guys, everybody know that I still have the tickets for the beef and bear for the Crusaders. Um, on Wednesdays, I'll be at the concession stand below you, Wednesdays and Friday nights, six to seven. I mean, I'm trying to help support the businesses in Eck Harbor City, also trying to help the Crusaders, you know, raise some money so we can keep these prices down for these kids. Um, also, the last Tuesday in June, which I believe is the twenty-sixth, is, um, the start of football. Every Tuesday and Thursday night from six to eight for the end of June and the whole month of July. Um, and then once August comes, we'll be five nights a week. Um, also, June twenty-third will be our Crusaders banquet at the football field. Juanos will be out there doing hot dogs and sodas and stuff like they always do for the kids. Um, welcome everybody to come out and see the kids. It'll be a good time. And, um, that's pretty much it.
Do you have other tickets for them?
Uh, they're in my truck. Yes, I'll see them. Yeah.
I bet you got them.
I know, I know.
Are they twenty now and then twenty-five at the door?
No, no, no. We're not selling at the door because I told Chris and Nick at Crossroads that you would, I would have them a list of the total by the sixteenth of, uh, Friday. That's the last day I'm selling the tickets. That way, they have a week to prepare and order food and, you know, because they get ten. get ten, we get ten, so...
I got my...
I'm going to ask you. That's it.
Stephanie?
Nothing.
Alright. Anybody in the public have a comment? If you have something, you need to come forward to the...
Ina Duran, 201, New Orleans, Davenport, New Jersey. Couple of things I would like to ask questions about, and number one is, Tuesday was election day, um, I celebrate everybody who won, and, um, I'm sorry for those that, uh, lost and didn't win. I know everybody's here trying to, uh, work for the city, but my issue is, on Wednesday, I got my water bill. My water bill went from a hundred and fifty-six dollars and twelve cents to three hundred and sixty-six dollars. Um, I'm on a fixed income now. There are a lot of older people in this city that are in my situation, or even in a worse situation. And, um, I'm just really disappointed that, and no offense to anybody, but I'll get a phone call about a parade, but I will not get a phone call about a problem that's going on in this city, and, uh, I'm hearing from people on social networks that are telling me, asking me questions, because I'm no longer on city council, but people are asking me questions that I can't even answer because I don't know the answer to them. I understand there's a four hundred and, four hundred thousand dollar deficit. I know we no longer have John McCoggan as our, uh, police chief, so, you know, he made over, over a hundred thousand dollars, and if there's a deficit, uh, what I heard it was four hundred thousand dollars. So, four hundred, take one hundred thousand away, that's going to be three hundred thousand. But where did the deficit come from, is what I know, what I know. Also, there's another issue that, um, maybe compounding the whole problem is, we, nobody knows what channel, I ask people, oh, what channel, um, do we get the city council meeting, uh, meetings on? Nobody knows. And those who do know say, we still can't hear them.
On computer.
That's been going on for years, and it needs to change because we need to know what's going on. You know, like, i-if there's going to be an announcement, give us a reminder and say, turn to channel blah 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 to watch or listen to the city council meeting so that you can know what's going on. I'm not angry, I'm just disappointed, and, uh, if somebody could answer the, some of those questions for me, I'd be very happy because I'm a happy camper, so...
Stay right there. First of all, the easiest one is to answer, I think it's ninety's channel.
Channel ninety-seven every night at seven o'clock. Can I test the volume here? I mean, it's not...
It's only two here, too.
And it's also on the website.
Okay. But people have been asking me, and I couldn't answer, so I keep going through my channels, you can't find it. But anyhow, okay, that's a good question answered, thank you.
Okay, that was the easy one. As far as the utilities go, the police chief has nothing to do with the utilities, his salary is in the city budget, not the utilities.
Okay.
You can't, so let's not confuse...
Okay, whoa, whoa, I'm just stating what I would ask.
Okay.
Okay.
Utilities have a deficit of revenue of about three hundred thousand dollars. Trudy, how would you answer that?
Close to about three hundred dollars.
Three hundred eighty.
Okay, revenue. There's a number of reasons why. One, and we talked about this before, but I'll go over it again.
Okay.
Number one, we have so many houses in, that have been in foreclosure that we're not getting revenue from, we've lost revenue there. We've lost revenue from some of our larger accounts who have closed up and aren't in there. We also have had one-time revenues that have come in over the past couple of years that we use to, to keep the utilities in operation. Perfect example is, when Rittenberg Estates was built, we had a connection fee for a hundred units, had brought in about four hundred, a little over four hundred thousand dollars that was used with the utilities for two years to subsidize. This year, for the first time, we're paying the debt for the new work plant, the repairs that were made to the wells, and the other improvements that were done. This is our first year, there are two payments of seventy-five thousand dollars each, or a hundred fifty thousand dollars. This is the first time. We raised the rates, if you remember, a couple times, a nickel here, a nickel there. It wasn't, we should have raised it more, but because taxes were going up and everything else, we kept the utilities at a minimum. What Jody has come up, when she did the analysis of the utilities, was that, on the revenue side, if we look at the utility, the utilities splitting it between sewer and water, we were, our operating cost for the sewer end was about three hundred thousand dollars less than the amount of revenue that we were taking in. The water revenue was there, but not to cover the debt. So that's really where we were. We're at a point where the revenue isn't sufficient to cover our expenses. You have two choices. One, you either raise the utility rates to what it has to be, or secondly, you allow the deficit to go on a tax rate, and that's not fair to taxpayers going to tax rate. So it had to go into the utility rate. Okay? Now, uh...
But anyhow, question is, why didn't we receive a letter letting us know this was going to happen, or that we had, uh, we could pick from column A or column B?
We had two meetings.
Uh, you had meetings, but...
No, it was a public meeting.
Oh, okay, well, anyhow, I think that all the taxpayers in this town should have gotten a letter, because I think it's...
And only three people showed up.
Uh, I think that everybody should have gotten a letter about it. When they do the assessment, they send us a letter. I'm, I'm just saying, I'm speaking for me and nobody else, and I just was curious as to why it has escalated the way it was.
I mean, your point, I think your point is well-baked, and I think we've learned of the thing that, you know, it should have been out there more and talked about. But everybody knew that utilities at some point were going to have to pay for these improvements. These improvements didn't come for free. They had to be, they, the water plant needed to be improved. The two wells that had to be rebuilt had to be done. They, they had to be. There's no way you're going to get around it. And the utility lines that were extended to the A Corver North to build the high school or to build the others, to some of the other areas of re-extend utilities, the time has come that they have to be paid. We have not raised the utility rates in the past, and, and we should have insisted that we raise them more, but everybody, when we tried to raise a nickel and a nickel over two years, everybody, if you're bitching, complained then, nickel was too much.
But see, that's...
Well, now you see the outcome.
That's my, that's my thing is, it should have been, the taxpayers should have been alerted to the fact that this, um, increase was going to occur, um, by way of letter. Because, I don't know, not everybody, the Atlantic City Press anymore and whatever. But anyhow, thank you, thank you for the time.
One at a time. Mayor, one at a time.
Um, I did try calling back.
I know, you called me today, yes.
Your, your phone at your home is full, your message box, so I couldn't leave a message.
Okay.
The messages are full. But I just want to make sure before you leave, do you understand, since, I guess you didn't see the council meeting, or you didn't care about it, or whatever.
Right.
But the, the biggest part of the water increase is the sixty-dollar fee, the flat rate on the sewer. The water was increased, um, from five, five dollars and some change, a thousand, per thousand gallons of water, to seven dollars and twenty-five cents per thousand gallon.
I appreciate that, Lisa, but the thing is, we as the taxpayer should know, there should have been a letter coming out telling us that this increase was going to come within two or three months, so we could, so we could prepare for it, so we could save for it, because it was like, uh, it was just a total shock, and I'm not, you know, bashing anybody, I'm just asking a question.
The biggest, um, if I could just say, is that the sixty...
I know, wait a minute.
The sixty-dollar fee is only for the third and fourth quarter. Come January, that will be removed for actually, that's just to recapture the January, February, March, April, May bill that we can't bill retroactive for. You know what I mean? So that's only a two-time, your, your bill will not be that high next year. It will go down to sixty dollars per unit of water.
All right. Mayor, Mayor?
I cannot have any further...
All right, Cliff?
What has happened, I anticipate poor planning, okay? With the Echo City, you know, anticipating five hundred homes out there, okay? That was a factor in there, it didn't sell. Anticipating selling water to promote the township, always been poor planning, that's where the problem came in. Actually, four hundred thousand dollars, that was here. Nobody knew anything about this to this year. So, anticipation of revenue coming in is sure, but because, uh, poor planning, this group, I'm going to give to this group, it's ten of us, poor planning, that's the problem.
Well, we also lost Brett here, President. So, that's part of it, I know, but I just think that when some of these issues come out, um, you know, send a letter, because that's what we need, and, you know, like, when you, when you tell me about a parade, tell me, remind me, uh, be sure to watch council meetings on channel ninety-seven, and, uh, you know, find out what's going on in our city, and that's all I want to say. It's just a suggestion, I ain't mad at anybody, I'm just asking a question.
All right, anyone else? Take your name and come forward.
Ted Reinhart. How about those in San Pauls?
Hi, Diana.
I think it's a disgrace of how the citizens of Ecorver City are being treated, with jamming all these fees and constant tax upgrades and everything. It, it's unfair. All these empty houses, well, why? Taxes too high, nobody wants to live here. Businesses are leaving, they're going on there.
Doug.
Nobody wants to come here. Many people don't realize that. How much will jam in these people's throats? You're baiting them out there, that's the biggest joke I've ever seen. All the people get, all this baiting, who's paying that money?
The stick people.
They think they get by living, they need. It's absolutely horrendous, and obvious, you can be shamed, so, for you know, all we take on business in a five-foot bucket.
Anyone else have anything?
Good job.
Good.
I'm Roxanne Mae, for the best. Um, last week, I was kind of prepared to engage in conversation regarding the water and sewer increases, but I'm prepared tonight. First of all, I want to thank all of you for that, it would be the opportunity to come up here and speak my mind. Um, I believe that it's only fair that I respect you, you respect me, so please don't chastise me for what I believe is right for me. I'm sure many residents may feel the same way I do, I don't know, I'm not speaking for them, I'm speaking for myself right now. Last week, Mr. Dennis, you gave a history on the town and its infrastructure. It was great, I didn't know it, but it got me thinking. There are a lot of things that we as private people have to do in order to survive and live in this world. We each have to create a budget for ourselves, we have to prepare for, um, emergencies, 401Ks, pensions, or savings, whatever the case may be, and we do that. You have been elected by the residents of Ecorver City to have a voice for them, to stand up for what is right for the community. And it's not about personal things, it's about what's good for everybody regardless of differences. And I've seen through some of the meetings up here, there's a lot of contention among different viewpoints, and I guess you have that everywhere, but the bottom line is, what is good for the community? So when it comes to budgets, and this water and sewer incident, I was just thinking, you can't change what's already occurred. You can't change projects that were already in the making, that had basically drained the city of some of their finances. But what we can do is look forward to the future and possibly look into holding off on some projects. Think about what's more important as far as what the community can use or utilize to its fullest potential. When this increase was made, my question is, how did you figure out what you should, um, increase per resident in order to make up for the deficit? Can somebody answer that for me, maybe Jody? Was there a formula that was used based upon the remaining homes in Ecorver City?
We did, I came up with a bunch of different scenarios that were presented at the council meeting of different ways that we could raise the deficit, whether they do a flat rate or usage, and that was the council's decision, which of those options?
Okay, was that based upon homes, residents that are currently living here and that are bringing?
Types of accounts that we have. Basically, water and sewer fees are pretty much charged based on the size of the meter that you have, so it was all kind of formula-driven, depending on what type of, um, meter you have, and then whether you, like, most residential customers have a three-quarter inch meter.
Right, I understand that.
So obviously, that's the bulk of, you know, the number of accounts that we have. So that figure, you know, then you can kind of play around, you do more with usage, and obviously, usage, you don't know, it could vary from year to year, you try to base it, you know, as close as you can on what you've had so far or in the previous year, and then on the flat rates, you just count the number of accounts that you have.
Okay, so based upon that, do you believe that enough revenue is going to be generated to compensate the deficit?
Yes.
Okay, do you believe that it might be more? Do you believe that more revenue might be taken in?
We did, um, see the amount that we needed exactly to get to the deficit, the state needs to have a balanced budget, so you can adopt it unless your emergency water expenditure is critical. So our, the budget projection that we have for, for the increase is exactly what we needed to make it become.
There was a little surplus of about thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, so that we should get out.
Yeah, we should get out. But I'm talking about the original.
The original one had a little bit more of a surplus, when we felt we could make a retroactive, when we couldn't, and we changed the structure a little bit, we made it so it was just enough to make it so the budget would be balanced.
Okay.
So if there is a strong, if there is a strong variation, it obviously, yes, that could affect the actual outcome.
Okay, so currently, that is...
But that is based on prior year. The state kind of forces you to base everything, the maps you can do with what you had in the prior year, unless you have a reason to, to change that. If you've changed the, you know, the rate or something like that, you can...
Okay, so you're pretty much, uh, okay with the fact that you're going to recoup at least the three hundred thousand that was, or that's in deficit mode currently?
Unless, unless, like I said, there's some kind of...
Okay, so maybe some people are, there's homes up for sale now that may not get sold for a very long time, or, um, that may decrease it, right? Because people are currently living there.
Which is also part of the reason that we did that ordinance that we introduced tonight, so that we, the flat fee portion will still be collected.
And that's revenue that's not anticipated.
Okay, so, but if you do go over, say more people start moving in, and you go over, will you use that surplus and put it back into the water and sewer?
Yes, it has to remain.
It has to remain.
It stays in the utility finances, that question, how we have to counsel how they want to put it under pressure.
Okay, so, so say we just break even, and then there's, um, I don't know, unforeseen currents, and it raises up, so...
A white bridge.
Do you think that maybe next year, we would get another increase?
No. There's not an anticipated revenue. When we did this, it was looked at that this would make it revenue-neutral going forward.
Okay.
That's what we were told, when the order renewed, and he said that this would make us...
We're doing, the engineers are doing a whole study, based on the current situation that exists, the rates that we raised it to would be enough for next year, and there isn't, barring any unforeseen changes.
And the study that...
But if we can stay the same as this year, it wouldn't be...
The study that they're doing is an analysis of the water and sewer department and the infrastructure, and what would be needed going forward, what the value of everything is, so that the city can look at and say, okay, here's what you have to repair going okay, here's what you have to repair going forward. Here's what it's going to cost. You can at least do the planning that Ina was talking about going forward and that you talked about at the last meeting. That study is underway now. Ryan, anticipates that to be completed again this summer?
Yeah, I just thought it was, every two weeks would be pulled there.
They'll have limited numbers, so you'll be able to look at and review going forward. So there's no guessing or no coming forward in the future and saying, well, we got to repair this or we got to do this. Perfect example, we talked about this at the last meeting, is the biggest expenditure that the utilities has going forward is the painting of the water tower. That has to be looked at. That has to be budgeted for future years. Hopefully, you can, you'll have revenue set aside each year so you don't have to bond things. You know, the intent was not to have to do any more bonding or any improvements.
Okay, well, I, I personally, and I'm sure everybody else in the audience, we're feeling the slam of this increase. If, if it was not an improvement, you, you, all of you have the power to do that. Regardless of what any of us want, you know what's right. You're the ones who are leading this city. You're basically, you want to do what's good and you want to make everybody happy. But the bottom line is not everybody's going to be happy about everything all the time. And I personally would have liked, you know, an increase over, you know, over the last four or five years as opposed to a slam.
I agree.
Because the bills went up anywhere between a hundred to two hundred dollars apiece. And I understand it's only for two quarters, but you have to understand, I have a budget and I'm sure everybody else out there has a budget. And now the budget has been upset because our money that we took out for our taxes to give to the city is not enough to pay for all the other changes that were made to the city. So I guess my hope is going forward that have some foresight to see maybe possible emergencies that are going to happen. Because I know that this year, I'm not opening my pool and I'm not having a garden. My father, eighty-four years old, has always had a garden at my house. He's not doing it this year. Because he's only having to have electricity. And that's sad when you think about that. And I'm not, I'm not saying, but woe is me, you know, I'm just saying, it's, it's not just me. It's a lot of people who feel this way. Like, it's a slam. It's, it's going to be a big slam for the next two quarters.
Can I add something else to the short? I think we talked about this the last time too. We did get a new developer out, the Echo City North. And as he takes down the lives which he agrees to, a portion of that money, it goes to pay the debt service that we didn't get when Brad died. So that'll help out a little bit too.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Julianne, if I were to work, Chicago Avenue. Now, it might believe that this is a temporary increase. Sixty dollars a quarter is just temporary.
That is temporary. The rate increase for the utilities per thousand gallons is not a temporary. I wish I could tell you it's not, but that isn't. But the other surcharge is that, when we adopted the ordinance, it was adopted that it goes away December thirty-first. It's only, it's part of the ordinance. It goes away, the fees hold over there.
Alright, so seventy. It is temporary.
Sixty dollars a quarter is temporary.
Okay, and a part of the increase is because of the vacant houses and all the...
A portion of that.
A portion of that, okay, and that's why...
Mr. Kerr.
Mr. Kerr is still in the... Okay, alright, and something to do with the sewer and water bill. Two times jogging down Deer Street, right by Key Rec, Needles. Walking my dog by where Sid I used to live, I used to live on Buffalo Avenue, Needles. So, so that's a big issue.
Pardon me?
It wasn't recent.
When I was jogging, it was a few months ago, but while I was walking the dog, it was just a couple of weeks ago.
Needles.
Needles.
I said we'd settle streets.
But this is what I'm saying. And when we have these citywide cleanups, people, people picking this stuff up, you know, that's pretty scary.
You're correct. It's everywhere.
Well, I'm sorry, Lieutenant, here.
This year, even uptown by, where it used to be Weisbeckers, where the park benches, Needles. And me and my cousin were talking because her little granddaughter goes to the school and they have like after school reach program and they go out and they clean up. You know, the streets.
I'm in charge of that.
They clean up the streets. Can you imagine your little, your little granddaughter seeing a needle and...
We don't, I have never encountered that. We've encountered a lot of different things.
Frequently, over the past year or two, I've, three times, three occasions, I've found needles. I didn't touch them.
Is there a possibility that you could call that in somehow?
Well, I did at the time when I was jogging, I did call.
I'm taking care of it.
I dialed the nine six five number. I ran, I don't know if the police came. But when I was walking my dog, and then the next day when I was walking, it was the one, the rain and everything, so I don't know.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Devisidus Stroplis and I live at five thirty-seven Philadelphia Avenue. And I, I have been here a few other times and I have to say that I was rightfully involved this time for you. And so, right, especially the last, yeah. So anyway, there are some good things that you go on up here and I don't like to just complain. But at the same time, I want my name to go down as being concerned, somewhat upset when I got the water and sewer reach bill. And, and I'm glad that I came because I did hear some answers during this time. I had a couple other questions involving it. And that is, I just pulled out a few of the bills this afternoon and one going back exactly two years ago, the flat rate for water was thirty-five dollars. And then a year and a half ago, it was sixty dollars. So it did go up in the last two years, year and a half, twenty-five dollars. And that wasn't, I did hear about nickels or whatever. But anyway, so it was a little more than that. But I also know that along several years ago, and I don't have that, I didn't look it up, and I don't even know if I would have it. But when they needed to, when we needed to dig a new well, they added a fee. And it was like this plus a certain amount. And that was going to be eliminated once it all was paid for, but then it never happened. So how do we know that these two quarters, like if we were in the same situation, that it's not just going to continue on? So that's a question that I do have. And I didn't realize at first it was just for the third quarters. Though it's still a shock because you're not planning on it, like the other people mentioned. But I just wondered, how do we know that the third quarter...
I'm going to, I'm going to have our attorney answer that actually, because he wrote the ordinance. Jim, the sunshine over sixty dollars, it goes away.
Yeah, it's just for the two quarters.
It's not only stated.
No, for the surplus.
For misses.
Just to make sure.
It's in the ordinance. And by ordinance, the only way it can be extended would be if there was a public hearing and had to be new ordinance introduced. Otherwise, it goes away again, point seven, thirty-first.
I just wondered because I know that other time years ago, it never went away. And, and, but the thing is, I mean, back then, the rules were very hard anyway. So I don't think most people would, you know, say anything about it. I certainly wouldn't. But anyway, that's pretty mostly what I wanted to just say, to share. And a lot of people can't make it though. And I would just say that like, when people say, well, only three people were here. I know that I did think about it, but when I got home from work by the time I ate and it was already going on seven or after seven and you were tired and you had to get up to work the next day, it makes it difficult. For me right now, I'm ending the job as in summertime is coming. And so today was the last day that I had to go for in-service and so that I don't have to get up tomorrow morning already. So it made it convenient to be able to make it. But a lot of people don't have that, you know, it's, and they just, it's a struggle after they work all day to make it out. And so I think we need to keep that in mind when comments are made that maybe they couldn't make it. Maybe they're, you know, exhausted or, and really would want to come. Or maybe they think nobody will listen. Sometimes you do get that feeling, like people aren't going to listen. Now, listening doesn't mean that you always get what you want either. I do understand that. But you want to know that there are people who are working and are listening or concerned and are going to do what they can to help. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, you got to come forward.
You do a bunch of jerks.
You have to come up.
I don't even listen to jerks. I'm not going to pretend. And I'm not mad. Why do I get the feeling there's only three of them that care about the people and the community?
Can't help how you feel. I understand. We're up here, I come here to work every time I come up.
Because it seems like you all just go along with whatever.
I work, I work a few committees myself.
One day it's questions, they question things and...
Everyone can...
It just seems like it's all you want is the Democrats, like, you shun them. Angelo and Cliff because they're Republican.
I don't think that's why you shun them.
It was, I saw it on the, um, computer.
Last meeting.
Meeting that Stephanie turned her back to Cliff when she said her name down. He's a veteran. She couldn't even say his name.
That's not true. I thanked Cliff. I thanked Cliff, Angelo and...
See, that's why I know you come on meetings because you can't.
You're attacking us. You were a com, you said, we attacked them.
Okay.
We have meetings every week for different committees.
And for years.
And we give reports.
Okay, here's a question. Here's a simple question. When are the taxes going to stop, is it ever going to end? I know there has to be, but all these years in a row, when will it end? Because... She won you. She's attacking everybody in their houses. Oh, you talk about playgrounds. That's nice for the kids. What about there's no kids to play on them? You know? The lake, that's another. What about, here goes the lake, goes down. I mean, really? Do you want a tax break?
No.
No, no tax for you all.
No, they...
That's why I don't have a flat house.
That's good, thank you. Thank you.
And we didn't get a break on the water and sewer either. My bill went up a hundred dollars and twenty...
Well, how about a little pay? You get a pay here?
Yes.
Why don't you give that up? They don't see how many. And if ten of you's up there, you really need ten? We have to pay ten of yous?
Do you know what the salaries are?
I know, they're very, I know, but every little bit helps. When I have to walk away from my house because I can't sell it and I'm sick. Very sick, yeah. You say that's sick. Jane will know. I know I don't act sick right now, but that's what's man. Look at that sick. That's dialysis. Do you can take into consideration people are sick, old people want to fix incomes? Or you just take into consideration a Democrat? You're a Democrat. You're a trash ear. You don't think this city is in trouble?
No more than any other city.
Oh, my God.
That is true.
What other city?
Boo!
What other city's in trouble? We're in the paint all the time. We're in the worst cities.
Boo!
You just can't admit it. Okay, I come in and I ask you, are you getting off the top? Where's all the money go? And I've been paying for thirty-two years.
We lost nine hundred seventeen thousand, three hundred forty-three dollars in revenue versus two thousand and eight.
Oh, I don't hear. See, that's all you have to do. You don't want to hear it. Because it's always the same circle.
No, it's not the same circle. You know what? You look at, you look at the city's expenditure, nobody wants to hear it and nobody wants to believe it. But take a look at how the city has been operating and the amount of money that we've spent on the city itself. I'm not talking about, other than salaries going up, other than insurances for health insurances, our pension costs. But take a look at how much it costs us to operate each of the departments. They haven't gone up, other than the statutory costs for trash collection. Those costs go up. Only thing that goes up is what we're billed extra. If that goes up in their budget, it's got to be raised somehow. The money that costs us for health insurance goes up. We're fortunate with the state, well, the state employees are paying a portion of that now. But it's still, our costs are going up, their cost goes up. Our pension costs are going up. The cost for our other electric and our gas, all those things, they're going up just like yours are at home. That doesn't, that money has to come to someplace. We tried the damnedest to keep the thing as low as we can. We tried with Brad Hader out there. Unfortunately, he got killed. We found another developer and hopefully he'll build some houses out there and we'll bring in some revenue. What do you like or you don't like? It's, you complain that there's no new radicals coming into town. Well, when we go out and we have a project that's supposed to be bringing radicals in, you still complain. We brought Rittenberg City, they paid seventy thousand dollars a year in taxes. We weren't getting anything from that property beforehand, okay? There's been a few businesses that have come here. Have they been what everybody would like? No. Is it beating down the doors for people trying to come here? No. It's a two-way sword. We got, we take two steps forward and one step back. Because our taxes are going up, but we try to hold the line. We've, we've taken offices and made a part-time in some instances. We haven't replaced some people in some other departments. So we haven't gone out there and spent your money crazily. Everybody wants to think that it's being spent crazy. Ain't no money out here being spent crazy. We haven't increased in revenue to Key Rec and the fire department, those places, you know, over the years. I think the fire department got their first increase last year in about five years, for six years. We're longer than that. So I mean, it's not like we're taking the money and just spending it. If anything else, we're trying to find ways to cut the revenue. Because we have, we've stuck too. And then schools go up, the schools go up, and then we have to cut our, they want us to cut more. We don't control the schools. We don't control the county. We don't control the regional school or the local school. The only thing we control is the city budget. That's it.
Do you pay a water bill?
Yes, no, I sort of, I have a well. I pay the flat rate on sort of, okay?
Can I have the company to dug you well?
No, no, if you got something safe, you'll take your time, you'll come forward.
If the company dug you well, you want to put a... Well, what if we use our house and why put a well in this age? Now, what, what's the process of when you lose your house?
Pardon?
Process. How long do you have?
I'm not ensuring, I can't answer that question.
You're not a banker either? I guess it depends.
Well, no, 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 no. I'm saying, don't pay my taxes. Because you won't take, say, say the seventeen hundred, you won't take sixteen ninety-nine. So how long does it take for them kicked out on the street?
The city doesn't evict people with taxes. They have a tax sale in December. Someone would probably come in and buy your tax sale certificate. And then they'd have the right in two years to propose on it. We don't, we don't evict people.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it. That's drugs.
They're everywhere. An epidemic in the state.
I know that. But how long they were arrested when George lived two feet from him? She watched, we watched. She heard things and thought she was brought in.
There's drugs in my house.
But they're still, I, I don't want to do them where a gun...
I appreciate you.
Fucking control, bitch.
My guy didn't know it was drugs in my house.
Our, our police department is doing as best they can with the...
You knew that, right? Thank you.
Can I come up again?
You can have it somewhere.
Julianne, if I were to work. I was walking in town today and the houses that are empty, vacant and whatever were closed, the yards are horrendous. So I didn't know if there's something that we could do to, or if we could... The banks, who takes care of the properties out there?
We go, Dakota Department goes out and sites those properties and they're supposed to move the grass.
Eyesore, it's like...
If they're not...
What, unify Echo and sell them, you know?
And we will send somebody up to Mellett and George, but this, this community's champion is helping us out a lot.
So how, like, would I...
Just call, call enforcement.
Yeah.
Sixteen sixteen, I would help. Just like Habitat Humanity, how they rebuild humanity could help...
Well, there's nobody stopping, there's nobody stopping any neighbor from going over to cut the grass. So if that's what you're saying, if that's what you're saying, that this, that you stop your walk, walk with your brother.
This is, you know, the unfortunate thing is, and Pat and I, Friday morning too, we'll go take a ride around and call places, call things in. And every time we've called in, they say they've already been given a notice, they have ten. The problem is they're given ten days before the city can send somebody there and cut it. By the time the ten days get there and they cut it, it's back to the same situation again.
If it looked nice, maybe if, for staff signs, it would be more attractive to go by or, you know?
To be honest, we, I, I get the feeling from a lot of these, uh, proposals, the banks aren't many, Harry itself. I, I've heard instances where the, the houses for sale for, I'll just pick a number out, a hundred thousand dollars. And the bank, um, that's what the bank says they want to get on it. And they've had offers at eighty-nine or ninety-one. And because the property's just been let go and they won't, they won't settle. I think Bobby Guerrier's having a very similar problem with his mother's house. Um, the banks aren't negotiating. There's, they just assume sit on them. I don't know if it's, they, I'm not in that business, but I, I wouldn't doubt if they can write them off.
Well, the house I was eating on where I sewed my needles, I seen the door open sometime.
Yeah.
And I, I called the police.
We try and stay on that, make sure they're boarded up, uh, but you can't, we board them up and they come and rip the boards off. I mean, I, you can't put a guard out in front of all these abandoned houses, so we, when we see it, we go there, we, we make them board it up. And some of these houses, the perpetrators will go right back in and rip the boards off and try and push them up so it looks like they're up, so they can sneak in and out.
One time I seen someone sliding down and the roof out of the window, it was probably the second floor.
To be honest with you, the amount of that that's going on, the amount of abandoned houses that you have to keep track of, our police forces are big enough. And we can't afford, we can't afford.
But I want to, I want to make the Carver City beautiful again.
I'd love to. I'm, I'm with it. We're trying to, we're trying to do the best we can. And I know the code enforcement, we're down one of the hours.
Nine six five sixteen sixteen.
And Donald sent somebody right over.
All right.
Ms. Ryan Hart. Stories for the week.
Uh, Janet Royne Ford. Well, like, I love a carver and I think everybody sitting up on the Diaz, we can't really pronounce it. Has the same feelings about a carver, otherwise you would not be here. And everybody in the audience feels the same way. And a lot of us were, some of us, I don't want to speak for everybody, were really upset uh, about getting the water bill and the time, the time of the water bill as well. And certainly that, that can be, I think that can be really understood because had it come before, it really would have, it really would have affected things. If the outcome of the election, let me just put it that way. I, 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 I think, I think it would have, you know? Um, just, just speaking frankly and from the heart, and I think freedom of, of speech, we have a right to do that without people laughing and, and making fun of people. That's, I, that's why I really hesitate even when I come up here and speak my heart, because people snicker and people laugh and there's talking behind or, you know, sidebar conversations going on and, and that's not, that, I, I don't, it's human nature anyway. Um, so speaking from the heart again, my, my thoughts are, we can't go back and fix, if you want to call it mistakes or whatnot, we can't go back and twitter over the bridge or water over the dam or whatever you call it. But moving forward, I think that's where, that's where we're at now and, um, Ed's saying, Ed, Ed Dennis just stated that the, um, increase is for, I don't want to wrongly state this, Ed, so you have to correct me. The increase in the water, water and sewer bills are for these next two quarters. I don't want to over.
No, I didn't say that. Not what I said.
Go ahead, restate that.
Not what I said. I said the sixty dollar charge, the surcharge, that sixty dollars is for the first, the third, fourth quarter. That will be eliminated. I said earlier that the rate will stay the same. The, 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 the new per thousand count, I didn't say that was going to be pulled back. I said the sixty dollars.
Yeah.
That's what I said.
I, and that's why I didn't want to mistake, because I get.
I said very clear about that.
No, 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 that's why I wanted to, to, yeah, don't, don't get me, see, I think you get angry and that's why I want to make sure.
No, I said, I, I'm glad you're there.
Okay, all right. Um.
Janet, can I just say something? We didn't, we don't know when the water bills go out. I didn't anticipate.
She's been trying to get them out as quick as she can.
I didn't anticipate it coming yesterday and I didn't, I didn't know when it was coming. So it's not, we don't mail them. That's held, that's done in a different department and it's done, not to our knowledge. We don't know when any of that stuff comes out. Nobody gives us a full warning, hey, we're mailing out the water bills on such and such a date. We don't know that. They just come, they're generated and mailed.
They're not generated here. They're generated by Edmund's Associates. And they put the bills together and the new rates, and I know that she's been trying to get them out along with the tax bills. And once she gets them printed and come back, she has to go over every one of them before she mails them out. She has been, and Jody, correct me if I'm wrong, she's been trying to get those bills out. I mean, that's why the ordinance had to be adopted the last time to get it, to get it done. And it had to wait twenty days before it becomes effect. So that's why she's been trying to get them out.
She put a copy of the ordinance with the water, but that's what took a little bit longer. So what Ed just said, we had to wait for the ordinance to be, you know, one piece.
Well, two, two, two things I just want to comment, a question and a comment. Um, I think moving forward, as far as, as building any more homes, that, that should, that, you need, you need to back off of any, any further development. Because we really can't. I, 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 you, you just have this craving, desire to build and, I mean, I mean, that's my perception. You just want to build, to build these radicals, but yet you've got this beautiful town where you can draw people that are able to walk. Hello, you know, that's what I like to do. You, you can walk to the post office, you can walk to Lala, you can walk to Lynn Chris. You, it, it, people can do things right in town and yet, yet you want to be buil- building more where you should let it be, let it, let it be already and concentrate on what you have. You have a declining population, if you look at the statistics. Concentrate on what you have and then, and then I have another question. But go ahead, you can come, I know you're going to have the answers against me, but go ahead.
No. As, as far as the building goes, you need new radicals. Everybody is telling us if we don't have new radicals and our assessment doesn't go up, then it's just a bigger burden on the existing homeowners and existing act. But you have another question.
How can we be? The infrastructure, Ed. Doesn't every, isn't everything going to have to be, come out?
No.
What's his name?
His name is Ryan.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Ryan, this, everything would have, I'm sorry, I'm not disrespecting you. Is everything going to have to be dug up? Being from the late eighteen hundreds, all the water and all the sewer.
Sure, you, you do have to replace older infrastructure and that's, that's part of the, the study that we're doing now.
Yeah.
Studying where the oldest parts of the infrastructure are, how much it costs to replace them, what they expected, the interval we expected to get from now going forward.
But Ryan, that's going to be everywhere.
Sure, it's, it's every municipality, every.
No, 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 I.
Oh, it, it.
Everywhere, like, let's, let's stay here.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, well, again, that's, that's why we're doing this study. You have different parts of the system that were built throughout time. Sort of pockets that were developed all at one time, so an area that, you know, a couple of blocks are developed in the twenties and then another portion was developed in the thirties. So we're, we're trying to get down to that level to figure out exactly, you know, does this need to be replaced in the next ten years, next twenty years, next thirty years?
That's right. I'm, you're right, because there's older neighborhoods and I forgot about that, that's a big, I don't think. The whole.
Yeah, it wasn't all built at one time, it's sort of.
Right, right.
A loose load. Right, so that's, that's sort of the approach you have to take in replacing it, that, that same piece of oil.
And, and that, well, does the water and sewer bill cover all that?
No, we're not anticipating any of that.
Oh, cool. How, how can we get money for that then?
That's what the study will tell us. That's why in the past we have applied for grants. Unfortunately, they don't give grants out like they used to. We used to get seventy-five, twenty-five grants, twenty-five percent we pay development. They're down to about forty-five, less than fifty percent. And we're alone in grant. Now, the, the good thing is, if this thing in Congress goes through the one trillion dollars, there'll be monies made available for infrastructure improvements on grant basis. That's one thing, that's one of the things that this study will put us in, in proper, uh, preparation for, going forward.
And we are constantly looking for grants for the city. A good example, we're anticipating a grant for the next couple of months to replace lead service lines or which there are some, any, if any portion of the lead service exists, it's instead of a lead service line. Um, so we're going out and trying to find out if there are still lead service lines, you can get them replaced and have this grant paid for it. So we're, we're constantly looking for stuff like that to just chip away and make any kind of improvements that we can that are not at direct cost to the city.
But, but that's complicated too, because it has to be an all lead service and it, and some of them weren't. So the engineers are looking at that now, but that's a hundred percent grant. If we get that, then they come in and pay a hundred percent. They're the types of grants that they're, they're surging out now.
Looking for that kind of stuff to just.
And there's quite a bit of money for that.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's money for that.
And, um, the, as far as the water plant goes, somebody had suggested there's problems with the, the water plant.
There's no problems with the water plant.
Okay, because I just wanted to, because I just didn't make any, that flew in, in the base of, of, of my thinking. Issues with the water plant, then why, why not go back to whoever built or designed it and have it immediately repaired? I just want to make sure I'm making this, 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 this.
As far as I know, there's no, no problems. Are you aware of any problems? The utility meets every two weeks, jury's never brought anything up. And jury, uh, sure, if there was a problem, we brought it up.
Ryan, could you please state how much the study for the infrastructure is costing the city?
I honestly don't remember off the top of my head. I want to say it was around forty thousand.
And the rest was grant money?
That's, that, that's the study to put together this, this capital assessment.
Forty thousand. Forty-one thousand was stated in the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything?
Could I ask another question?
Oh, all right.
Is there somebody else? I just heard you say a few times about, that the part that will be reimbursed, not reimbursed, but anyway, that, the part that they will drop in the future is the sixty dollar flat rate on the sewer. Uh, so the, but the increase on the water flat rate, nobody mentioned. You mentioned about the other, um.
That's staying.
Okay, so that's ten dollars. Okay, that wasn't mentioned. Okay, I, I know that, um, you mentioned about the certain amount per gallon, that's.
Yes.
But the ten dollars increase, okay. So that wasn't mentioned, so I wasn't sure. I guess even the sixty dollars wasn't mentioned.
Yes.
And then, uh, something altogether, differently related, and I had thought about this before, and that is, what can be done with, um, because there, we have a regulation, actually it has something to do with all of this, with the clean water in the area, with pets and when people walk their animals, uh, that they're not supposed, they're supposed to have bags and clean up. And, but I, I know my backyard is full.
So is mine.
And, and it's like, just so you put out your trash sometimes, it's difficult. And I just would, I actually went to the apartments next to me and I talked to the individual, I don't know that he's really a manager, but he does, he's, uh, one that they go to, like, maybe he's a maintenance man. Care hater.
Yeah, pretty much.
Uh, and I did talk to him about it and he said they don't listen to him or whatever. And so I did try on my own by contacting that way. And I just wondered if we can't do something to enforce our laws or, uh, part of getting it, part of looking nice? And, and actually, for the water.
Clean up.
Well, they get, when they walk them down and they don't have a bag with them. Right. So I, I don't know. I just want to bring it up and see if there's something that can be done.
Well, did you want to talk about that in ten years or?
With the correctors of ordinance in effect, for the police to actually write the ordinance, we have to physically see it happen. It doesn't stop any resident from giving us their name, or if they know who it is from signing a complaint against that individual, if they see it happening. What we would do if we get the ordinance, have the person who witnessed it happen sign an ordinance against the offender of it. But unless we actually are driving by and we witness it happening and then not picking it up, that's the only way we would be actually able to write the ordinance. So that's the way the ordinance is working. So if you know someone, if you know who it is and you want to bring it in, we're glad to have you sign the ordinance against it.
I, I really wouldn't like to do that. Well, I, I think the majority of people do it that way. I don't see any offense. Only once in a while we say that.
You have a question?
Yes, I have a phone call. I'd like to, the city's listening to this, but it's a particular. I'd like to know, I'd like to know, is the city benefit from the power program leak? They just want to know.
Power one.
The power program.
Duvalan City?
Yes.
No, I think it's a disadvantage. The city joined the lawsuit, uh, that the county is filing to oppose the filing. That, again, in terms of people's tax bills, that is a, uh, portion of the certificate expenses the county has paid amongst the taxpayers. At the council, last meeting, adopt, or two minutes ago, adopted a, uh, resolution.
Right.
Joining litigation that the county is filing against the state, uh, trying to block or revise the power bill.
Okay, if it gets revised and the thirteen percent of the sixteen, what it affects? Would it be a refund for the taxpayer?
But it's four million dollars that the county would be entitled to that they're not receiving per year, for ten years, that's forty million dollars.
Forty million, right.
Now, obviously that gets spread out of the entire county.
Okay.
Uh, but there is, uh, there would be, uh, there's a expense to the taxpayers by them not getting the close to thirteen point something percent.
Yes.
By losing that three percent, there's definitely an increased expense that is reflected in the tax bill that the people receive.
Okay.
Unfortunately, municipality has to collect for the county.
Okay.
So you get your tax bill, if you look at your tax bill, they do break down what the county is and if you compare what your county portion was last year or this year, you can see what that's.
Six point four cents it's going to cost you because of the power program. For the counties. Whatever, varies.
I'm sorry.
It's on a hundred, I think. I, I think that's what that was, ninety dollars, uh, on a hundred thousand dollars.
Anybody else have anything? I want to thank everybody for coming. All right, your most. All those favorites.